I am calling the June 8th Pedaluma City School Board of Education meeting to order. We will start from comments from the public on closed session. Looks like we have no public, so I am going to adjourn us to closed session. Looks like we're all here. Sorry, we're in a few minutes late. We are reconvening the regular session of Pedaluma City School Board Meeting. First, or sorry, next item up is option and approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move to I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, next up, looks like we have Pedaluma High School recognition student of the month from last month.
Hello, so Lucas Bettencourt is Pedaluma High Student of the Month for April. Lucas was a senior enrolled at Pedaluma High School and has been on the varsity wrestling team since he was a freshman. Lucas has kept very busy during the pandemic between taking care of his two steers. He raises for FFA wrestling and working part-time at Barless Feeds. He has had some truly wonderful times at Pedaluma High School and makes some wonderful memories. Wrestling is a very big part of his life and has helped shape him into the person he is today. This year is his sixth year in the sport and he will truly miss it since he's graduated. Lucas also loves mountain bike riding and dirt bike riding. Both sports are a great way to get out in nature and stay healthy. Lucas does not quite know what the future will hold for him, but he is excited to find out. He feels well-equipped for anything that life decides to throw his way, thanks to some wonderful teachers, coaches, friends, and of course, his family. He will always remember his time at Pedaluma High School, both the good and bad, even though the good outweighs the bad. Lucas is honored to be student of the month for April, especially during these trying times. And then the student of the months for May. The first student of the month is Victoria Canela. Victoria Canela was a senior at Pedaluma High School who just graduated. She has been on the swimming team. She's been on the swim team for the high school for the past four years. Not only has she been working hard during the high school swim season to improve her times, but she's also been swimming for the Westside Aqueducts. She hopes to swim for the Santa Rosa Junior College in the fall of 2021. Through her hard work, Victoria was able to achieve a 4.15 GPA. She achieved this by taking college and AP classes. Through that endeavor, she was able to get the Doyle Scholarship for the Santa Rosa Junior College. Victoria is a highly motivated and dedicated student. She always does her best on any assignment she is given. When she doesn't understand something, she always goes to seek help. Her teachers always take their time so she can fully grasp the material. When her peers need assistance with the homework, she is there to explain and help them work through those problems. She volunteered at the high school library for her first year of high school. She also volunteered at a summer camp. The summer camp was a week long and it helped promote peace. She enjoyed interacting with the children and helping them learn the value of kindness and how to communicate their feelings. Victoria dedicates most of her success in high school to her mother and teachers. Through their persistence, patience, and dedication, they helped her succeed. They have been there for her, they've been there for her and motivated her to keep on going, even when it seemed difficult for her to do so. Because of this, Victoria knows that no matter how tough it may be, she can and will pull through it. The next student of the month for May is Daniela Martinez Montregon. On business days, Daniela is hardworking and enjoys the process of learning while pushing herself to be a better student. Within the school, she has been a yearbook editor for the past three years and has loved getting to know the PHS community. She enjoys subjects such as math, government, even if at times they are confusing. The rest of the time, she enjoys her part-time job of being a stand-up comedian and making her friends laugh. She enjoys the simple things in life like nature and groovy music. Some of her hobbies include painting, yoga, hiking, and gardening, even if she doesn't have a green thumb. Outside of school, she spends her time helping out at the family business in Marin County. Most recently, she and her sister opened up a successful online store selling handcrafted jewelry and accessories. KQ has allowed her to explore her passion for entrepreneurship while combining her artistic skills. She hopes to one day open a business and continue living in the Bay Area.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming back right at the beginning of your summer break. All right, next up is Chris Thomas. Budget revision number four.
I see we have a very small participation rate tonight and I'm hopeful that that isn't because I'm doing a budget presentation. I suspect it may be related, but you know, I guess not everybody gets excited as excited about the budget as I do. So anyway, we won't hold that against people because it does take a unique talent, shall we say. Okay, with that, I'm going to start with budget revision number four. And again, you'll take action on this later in the agenda, so I'm going to quickly go through it. And what I'd like to do is just quickly review the Word document that's attached on Agenda Online, or that's that kind of goes through the narrative, and then also quickly walk through the spreadsheets. I won't take a lot of time, just kind of highlight some of some of the key points. So let me see if I can share my screen. Okay, so here is the narrative that's attached or that's embedded in Agenda Online. It kind of talks about what is a budget revision. We bring them throughout the year to the board typically when we're doing an interim report. But we also bring one usually the first board meeting in June, kind of as a final wrap-up budget revision for the year. Sometimes when we're doing the SACS or the standardized account code state reports, we'll find that we need to make some minor tweaks based on the technical edits that they walk us through. So it could be a final fifth one if we need to make any technical edits, but generally this will be the last one for the year. And so I'm going to go over to the spreadsheets. This narrative just kind of talks about some of the major assumptions that are also identified on the spreadsheet. The spreadsheet is doing it in very truncated characters and words because of course I have very limited space. So this is there for you guys to kind of go through. It gives a little bit more detail as well as all of the other funds that are involved. I did want to point out one error I noticed in Agenda Online. The ending fund balance is 9.9 million. It said 10,000,100, but this is the correct ending balance. So let me stop sharing for a moment and I will go over to my spreadsheet. Okay, so here is, no, this is the wrong one. Okay, so here is budget revision number four. So this budget revision, I'm starting with the unrestricted and basically it compares this budget revision number four in column E with the last budget revision we brought as a second interim, which is column D. So you can see the variance is simply column E less column D, that equals the variance. You can see that the overall LCFF revenue only changed by $366. Typically, this time of year, we would see bigger variances because we know what our P2 ADA is in April after second interim. However, because we're using 2019-20 P2 ADA, there's very little changes here. Most of the changes are that we finally received the local property tax updates from the county of Sonoma. And so we've adjusted those. So you'll see big negatives and big positives here as we make those adjustments between state aid, which are these two dollars right here, and all of the local property taxes, which are these dollars here. But the net is really the most important thing and you can see the net is very immaterial. So moving down, we've got other federal state revenues. That's MA or the medical reimbursement funds that mostly South County receives in the unrestricted budget. And then we've got state revenues. Lottery, we actually adjusted down and part of that is because we had some prior year adjustments and final accruals that cleared. And so we actually had to reduce our budget down a bit for that. And then you can see leases and rentals and interest earnings. Interest rates are much lower at the county level. Again, all of our money is invested in the Sonoma County Treasurer. And so we're subject to whatever rates that they're able to 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 receive based on their investments, et cetera. So we've adjusted that down because we now have the first three quarters. And so we can now see that our interest earnings are projected to be lower. And then other local revenue is simply local site donations. And then you'll see a decrease in special education. That's primarily based on the fact that we finally got the P2 estimates for the Pila Selpa and what our revenues are going to be for special education. We've also taken some of the budgets down for some of the vacancies that we have in special ed because of the pandemic and distance learning. Many of our instructional assistant positions were not filled. Going down onto the expenditure side, you know, we had a settlement with our PFT or Pedaluma Federation of Teachers of 2%. We've budgeted all that. We also adjusted management salaries for 2%, so they've also been adjusted in this budget. You can see down in the classified section, we've made some adjustments for final staffing. And some of it is savings from vacancies. For example, in 2900, a portion of this relates to the fact that we didn't have any crossing guards at Pen Grove because we didn't have any students. So we brought those budgets down a bit. We don't want to, we don't like to eliminate budgets because of vacancies because we like to see those trends. And so if you reduce budgets downs based on vacancies, then the following year, those budgets pop back up and it shows this huge variance. So we actually like seeing the budgeted amount for an annual salary and the variances because of vacancies then create a variance. And that's okay, that's something we expect to see. But with the pandemic, there was such a great level of it that we did go ahead and bring some of those down a bit. And then again, as we adjust salaries, then the benefits follow. So we're adjusting salaries. So you would expect with 325,000 worth of increases in certificated, you're going to expect the STIRS rate to go up, right? And so that's generally what that's from. The PERS rate here went down in large part because we also took out some of the PERS and LOU that had been budgeted. And you'll see that more in the restricted side of the budget. Down under materials and supplies, most of this relates to site donations and local site budgets as they've been moving money around. Again, when you come back up here and you see this other local revenue, the 62,000, those site donations then get budgeted primarily down in the 4300 account. So it's not a dollar for dollar because sometimes they're applied to field trips and you'll see that down below, but the primary place we put them is in the 4300. We did buy some classroom furniture, as you know, and we've also done some copier replacement, non-capital copier replacement. So that's what that is about. Utilities, you know, we I actually think we may close the books with more money than we've budgeted. We're really seeing increases in garbage, in sewer and in water. So even though our electricity has stabilized, we're seeing increases in other categories. And so this is kind of indicative of that. It'll be interesting to see once we close what that actually looks like. And then other contract services, again, a lot of this is related to things like graduation, getting ready for graduation. And we're hiring people this year more than ever to do various things. It could be also related to some of the field trips. So that's primarily where we see some of those costs. And then communications, this is kind of an interesting thing. See how it jumped from 150,000 roughly an adopted budget now it's at almost 300,000. This is not going to go away and this is because they redid the E-rate. Some of you may know what E-rate is, but it's basically a federal program in which we get rebates for our telecommunications. And so a lot of that has reduced significantly. It's moved from what's known as category one to category two. Category two being reimbursements for equipment related to telecommunications, like the data equipment that we've purchased. Other, used to be we got big rebates for our telecommunications, things like phone bills. Those have been reduced significantly. So now we're seeing more aligned with what the true cost of our telecommunications is. So not a lot of other huge variances here. I think the biggest thing of note is that our deficit spending goes from 900,000, just over 900,000 to close to 1.4 million. And again, we knew that was going to happen when we provided raises for staff. And that's in large part because we're, remember, we're leveraging the zero COLA we got this year, knowing they owe us 2.31% for next year or this year. So we knew when we settled with 2% that we were going to have to dip into our savings account to cover that this year, but that it was going to come out in next year's COLA. So this is a thoughtful deficit spending. I would say there's also some one time in here, remember, there's about 355,000 of site carryover that's budgeted and that will come out. But I will say this $1 million, if you take out the site piece of it, this million dollars becomes ongoing. And when, when we see next year's budget in a few minutes, you'll see that that eats into the 5% COLA that we're going to get. And we expect that too, right? Because we gave 2% raises against a 5% COLA. But this 1.3, 1.4 million is important to take note of for that purpose. Okay? Fortunately, we're still maintaining strong reserves of 9.9 million dollars. Okay? Any questions about the unrestricted? Okay, going on to the restricted, again, I'll just do a few highlights here. Going up, starting with revenues, some fluctuations. This is the learning loss money. We've budgeted some of the learning loss money that we're aware of, mostly the state, not the federal, which is why you're not seeing huge increases up here into the federal. So we don't have all of the resources or when we did this budget to know what all of the federal money is going to. They're still working through some of the mechanics of that. This only represents roughly 50% because we're getting 50% this year, 50% next year. But it allows for carryover and/or deferred revenue. So when we look at next year's budget, you'll see that we've also budgeted additional and then 85, 90. It's not going to be super obvious because we had to take out next year all of the one-time money we got this year for the COVID money, even though we're putting in the learning loss money. Does that make sense? So we have to pull out the one time we got this year when we're doing next year's budget and then put in this additional 50% for the new money. And then down here, the other thing, point out, we did receive two of our electric buses, two of the five. So we budgeted the revenue and then we budgeted this expense because we had to issue purchase orders for that. And so we had to also budget the grant reimbursement that we're going to get for those buses. So about 800,000 of this is specifically for bus replacement. And then again, you're going to see increases where we would expect to see them in in the certificated where we have the PFT rate, the retro. You'll see a decrease here because again, we have our new transition program, but we did not hire the program manager for the transition program because it was in such transition due to the pandemic. So that will then go back up when we budget next year. And again, this is primarily for vacancies. Some of this relates to South County. Most of it relates to special education. And then some of these costs, including the certificated up here, is also related to us budgeting summer school. So we budgeted things like some some of the secretarial support for summer school using the learning loss. We budgeted the student advisors for summer school. We also put in some instructional assistance here for summer school. And then some of these teachers and counselors also are for summer school using the learning loss money. So it's all kind of included in here. And then you can see some of the learning loss money we put in a 4300 until that's all worked out with that, that ELO plan. Okay? But since we're not going to spend it all this year, it'll become carryover and then we'll budget it in December when we, when we show you what the carryover budgets look like. Um, a lot of these changes are related to special education, athletics, kids coding, routine restricted maintenance contracts, things like working on HVAC systems or replacing systems. Here is, it says preschool grant, but this is actually the bus replacement, the 600,000. I'm sorry, bus replacements here at the 871,000. This is the preschool grant. This, we're not going to spend this year because remember, we get that preschool grant to work on the building. It's in design, so this money will be spent next year. And that's it. Other than we brought 250,000 down of parcel tax carryover. Again, our K6 music teachers were reassigned to independent study and other learning loss-related positions. And so we were able to capture some of that carryover and that's helping us balance the budget for 2021-22 in the parcel tax. And I'll show you that when we get there. So that's it. That is the final budget revision of the year, or at least the majority of the final. Again, there might be some small technical edits we bring at the next board meeting, but I don't anticipate very much. Any questions?
Chris, is this what gets audited later with our firm, Niger and Niger?
Niagara and Niagara?
Yeah.
They don't budget, they don't necessarily, they do look at the budget to see that the final budget equals this budget revision we're bringing. So we cut off budget revisions in the system, but they'll audit the actual, so what we, the actual expenses end up being. So we'll bring that to you in September called unaudited actuals. And that'll show this final budget revision number four compared to how we close the books. And then that closing process is what the auditors audit.
Thanks for that clarification.
Other questions? I can't see everybody when I'm sharing, so. Okay. Okay, with that onward, we'll go on to the preliminary budget since that's probably the most important of the evening. Okay, so again, this is the board item that's attached. I am going to walk through this a little bit because it does have some good information. And then we'll spend a little bit more time on the spreadsheets because that kind of quantifies it in dollars and cents. This is really more of the narrative. Again, this just kind of talks about some background and the budget process we use, the budget advisory committee. As you recall, we convened that budget advisory committee in June because we thought we were going to get 10% reductions on our revenue. And then once the final state budget was approved and we knew we weren't because the legislature came in and took made different recommendations that the governor accepted, then we reconvened it in October and had more of a normal budget advisory committee process. At this time, the budget advisory committee was not recommending because of course, we're in a very different financial position now, any budget revision or any budget reductions. Then talks a little bit about the LCAP and how we have to align our budget with the LCAP. So, but I really want to kind of get down here on the meat and potatoes of what our budget is based on. And so primarily, we're using information and they revise. And so you see that 5.07% cost of living adjustment or COLA. And that's what's driving our revenues primarily. And then we're also continuing to use 2019-20 P2 ADA, which is good for our revenue, but we're still having to project our ADA for 21-22 because then in the out-years, it compares prior year versus current year and it's going to use 21-22 to do 22-23 revenues, which is going to be very important for our multi-year projections. And so
I'm sorry. I just want to ask a question because it's specifically about that.
Okay.
So I just, I don't want to lose it. It's about that ADA, so in, in your in the preliminary budget, it had a reduction in the ADA. And that was my question. I thought that we were being, that there was the whole harmless clause was continuing and that it was still going to be based on the 2019-20 ADA. And yet in the preliminary budget, it, it has it as, you know, a reduction of 114. So that was my question was why was that there?
So we still have to include the actual ADA we're projecting in our calculations. And what it then does, the calculations, because they know we're using 1920, it bases the revenue on 1920. So the revenue is based on 1920, even though I have to put in real calculations and literally just to share with you how complicated the spreadsheet is. This is our ADA projection spreadsheet, just to kind of give you a flavor. We, I actually project out by school, all of the grade levels, and this is based on all of our work. And then I project out what's the difference? What is the adopted, in this case, the preliminary budget going to look like from our, and see how that 388 right there, I'll make it a little bit bigger. That 388 balances to the enrollment projections that I've showed you. Then I have to project out the charter ADA and pull that out and then project the non-charter ADA. Then I have to project out special day class, South County, home hospital, non-public school. They all have different ADA rates. And then that equals what is our ADA, which is about 7100. So that's the projected ADA, but that's not what we're going to get funded on. We're going to get funded on 2019-20. The challenge, Manny, becomes in 22-23, we're going to get funded on the higher of 21-22 or 22-23. And the enrollment projections that I included in the stuff that you saw, here's that 73-88 again, right? So we're projecting for 21-22, 73-88. But look at the potential loss we're projecting in the out-years. So it's going to, it's going to assume the higher of 21-22 as compared to 22-23 when we're looking at 22-23 revenue and beyond. Now, in, in my preliminary budget and in the LCFF calculations that I did, I assumed flat ADA. I assumed that the 21-22 ADA, which is based on this reduced enrollment, is going to be flat for the next two years. Because really, we don't know where our ADA is going. We don't know where enrollment's going. These numbers here are based on all of the roll-up from the feeder. So I actually go in and I this may be more information than you want, but this is the beauty of Zoom. I can share this with you. So I actually go in by feeder district and I input all of the current seabeds and then I move it forward. And so all of the kinders, including us, get moved to first and the first get moved to second and so on and so forth. That's called cohort projections. And then I assume a little bit of attrition from the grade levels. But we also know we have all this growth and development across the city. And so we don't know what the impacts of those, those growth points are going to be. And so that's why trying to project out 22-23 and 23-24 gets really challenging. So right now, I'm assuming that if this enrollment holds steady, the ADA based on it will drive ADA here and possibly here if it's flat. It's probably way more information than you wanted to hear.
Oh, thank you. It's just that that piece is always, I just needed clarification on that. Thank you very much.
Chris, I need clarification on something.
Okay.
You're projecting a 5.07 COLA.
Yes.
Is that, I mean, doesn't, doesn't the governor and the legislature kind of have to, do we know for a fact that's going to happen?
Well, you know what? We don't know. We do know that the COLA is set by statute. So we know the 2.31 is set by statute for 2021. That was set by statute last spring and they owe that to us. We know they owe us Prop 98 money and we know that the COLA for next year, we know what that's going to be because that's all set by statute through, based on revenues through April. Now, you don't know if they're going to give us that 1% augmentation or what they refer to as the super COLA. So is it going to be 4% or 5%? We don't know for a fact until we have a final state budget.
But it will be, it will be good.
We know it, we know that it will most likely be 4%. Because when you combine, when you combine the 2.31 for 2021 that they owe us and the projected COLA for 21-22, it's roughly around 4%. Whether or not we get the super COLA, the additional 1%, we don't know for a fact that will come to fruition.
Okay. Thank you.
But we have to use what we, what, you know what I mean? We use the May revise typically, just like last year, we use the May revise, assuming a 7.92% overall deficit. You know what I mean? We had to assume that because that's what the May revise said. But then come the adopted budget, it was very different. So you're right, it could be the reverse this year. Based on the state revenues continuing to come in strong and they are continuing to come in strong, I'm not sure that that will be the case.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Thanks.
No problem. The other thing I want to point out is that the charter schools are not based on that 2019-20 ADA. They actually by law cannot be. There was a unique exception that forced us to use 1920 for 2021. But in 21-22, they have to use the projected ADA. And fortunately for those three charters, we're projecting growth. So that actually is helping us. It's helping to offset overall the negative projections for the elementary and the secondary. And I would also say And I would also say, keep in mind, when we compare these numbers, we lost sixth grade academy and we closed Gateway to College. So part of this high school, the high schools may not feel the loss of ADA. They're actually holding fairly steady. San Antonio is actually growing a bit. But we have to incorporate in, come 1920, we still had Gateway to College. And that was roughly 30 ADA or 50 ADA that we're no longer getting. So we benefited from using 1920 ADA because we still were using the, or getting, receiving the benefit of sixth grade academy and Gateway to College. Okay, so does that make sense? Okay, so here's some other major assumptions. We're assuming ongoing reduced interest. I'm not anticipating any increases as of this moment. 22% increases in property and liability, that's an estimate. RESIC has not yet set their property and liability. They were recommending I use between 20 and 25%. I split the, the, I took the average roughly and, and decided on 22%. That's about 219, 220,000 increase. STIRS rate, remember we were supposed to, it was supposed to go down as of last year, now it's going up roughly 265. PERS rate going up 2.2%, that's roughly 300,000. And then this is significant, the state unemployment insurance rate. We get the statewide rate for government organizations. It's historically 0.05%. It went to 1.23% for obvious reasons. And that's an estimated cost right now of about $500,000. Sorry, I missed my dollar sign. So we're also increasing the contract back up to normal for, for student, for our special education transportation. Sewer garbage, we talked about, we eliminated that one-time board election, that will come back the following year. We eliminated those one-time site funded expenditures, that 355,000, we talked about, our indirect rate is changing slightly. That bus replacement grant, we're taking that back out. We're eliminating carryover in the grant programs. Here's that 250,000 in parcel tax, I'll show you that on the spreadsheet. The excess cost bill back for Sonoma County is going up. Of course, if STIRS and PERS are going up and SUI is going up, of course, the contribution for special programs has to go up, right? Because they're absorbing some of those costs. But we're still only charging, or our costs are still roughly estimated at 39,000 per student compared to 63,000 from SCO. Now, SCO is less ADA, so if you assume roughly 12,000 in ADA that we would receive, or 10,000, depending on how much the students attend, then we're still saving, you know, even if we assume it's 51,000, we're still saving quite a bit per student by operating South County ourselves. Increases in special education, again, large part STIRS, PERS and SUI. The library contribution jumped from 318 to 400,000. The contribution to routine restricted maintenance has jumped up. In part, this is because as our budget increases, the 3%, the dollar amount, the 3% represent increases. The South County contribution, we talked about, special education. We also have eliminated all of this one-time money. This was all the one-time federal money that we got, federal and state money we got this year, we have to take that out. And then we add back in a little bit of federal money and 50% of the state one-time money. Okay, so with that, I'm going to jump over to the spreadsheets unless there's any questions about that.
There's a TBD on the SR3, so that's not in the projected, that's not in the preliminary budget.
It's not because they did not give us the Saks accounts to use. So they have to tell us, use this resource. And without the resource, I can't, I have no way to put it in the budget. So that'll come with the first budget revision.
Okay.
Okay, so here is the preliminary budget. You can see our ADA is dropping by 114. Maddie, I think you were referring to that, so you can see that drop. That's the estimated 2021. But note, our LCFF is going up by $3.6 million, because again, 2019, 20 is still driving the majority of this, and then growth for the charters. Okay? We're increasing mandated costs, estimated a little bit of COLA, plus we're going to get some of the menstrual product reimbursement under the mandated costs. We don't know what that dollar amount is going to look like. When we took out those one-time negative carryovers, that pops this back up to our more normal amounts for lottery. Interest earnings, we're projecting a little bit more, not a lot. This is based on the transportation. We're going to start providing transportation for our feeder districts. So we're going to assume we're going to start getting revenue in from that. Local donations, of course, we take out all those one-time local donations, or the majority of them. The contribution to special ed, so this is going up a million dollars, and those are all of those factors I talked about. South County, special ed, routine restricted maintenance, and the library program that we're contributing, using supplemental to the parcel tax. So that's what's making up that million dollars. And so our net increase in revenue, when you take that into account, is actually only 2.5 million, not 3.6 million. Okay, that's important when we get to the depths, when we get to the bottom line. So again, step and column increases. The Pen Grove STEM coach took a leave of absence, that position was not backfilled for this year, so that's what that is. Step and column increases here, and we're adjusting for some of those vacancies, things like the crossing guards at Pen Grove we put back in. And so you can see some of those adjustments here, since it's not all step and column. Here's some of the STIRS and PERS increases. Here's that big SUI increase. Now, this is just the unrestricted side. When we look at the total, including the restricted, you can see how 400, 400, 600, 560. Now, this is partly because of some of the salary increases too, so this is not an exact science. Going back to the unrestricted. This is that first student increase that we talked about. Here's some of our utility costs. This is the, the, this is the, this is the property and liability insurance, remember that 219,000 I mentioned? Some utility increases. I actually think we're going to have to increase this even more. I don't think this is high enough based on what we were seeing after we finished the budget, the April and May invoices coming in. Again, that's getting rid of that board election cost, this all-site carryover. We're looking at some more copier replacement and maybe a tractor replacement, we're looking at some of our grounds equipment. And then that's that change in the indirect cost rate. And then here is the contribution to food service. So this is a really hard thing for me to project right now. Because we have no idea where our meal service is going to go for next year. It's all going to depend on how much flexibility we have to serve students. How many feet apart they're going to have to be, you know, there's a lot of unknowns with this. I'm hoping that this 300 is conservative, and as our revenues come back up, that we'll be able to bring that down further. And then we have 280,000 worth of deficit spending. So that's pretty significant with a 5% COLA. But we have built in, remember, all of those 2% raises already, and there is about 400,000 of one-time software licensing contracts related to Renlearn, Renaissance Learning, Illuminate. Some of those were, were getting long-term savings by doing three-year contracts. So there is about 400,000 of one-time here. So really, if you back the one-time out, we're really looking at a positive of about 120,000. And then you can see what we're projecting there. Onto the restricted, I want to point out this 250, see this negative 250, that's us budgeting that carryover for the parcel tax. So part of that is up here in salaries. So as we have processed salaries and benefits, the parcel tax was not adequate to cover all of that. So we're leveraging some carryover in order to maintain program. Mostly in the elementary. Secondary, we already make that contribution up roughly $400,000 that I showed you earlier. So looking at the restricted revenues, here is where a bunch of that money's coming out. This is all that one-time prior year COVID $19. And only a small portion of the new money is in here because that SR3, which is the big federal, is not in yet. And then here is a net million dollars because we're backing out all that one-time state COVID money and then putting in the learning loss money. And then there's some large, you know, this is that bus grant. So we took that 800,000 out for the bus grant, right? So that's where you see that big decline there. This is the increase in self-revenue that we talked about. Remember how I said, special education, so we're looking at projected self-revenue. And then some of this is starting to build in some of the learning loss money. And these budgets will be somewhat fluid because we'll amend the budgets, these are kind of placeholders, if you will, for some of this. Because we don't know exactly what all of that learning loss money is going to go to. This does include summer school for July, because summer school split between June and July. So this does include some summer school for July. And so some of this you're seeing are other learning loss increases. And then you see the increases for SUI and for STIRS and PERS. At least in part. And then a lot of this coming down is all because of that one-time carryover that we had. So in this budget revision number four, remember, in the restricted budget, we had 6.4 million in carryover from 2019, 20 that we were spending in 2021. So that's why you see all of these significant reductions. A lot of that is in here. And then here's that bus being taken out, the two buses being taken out. Now, we have three more buses coming in, so once we know exactly what that's going to look like, that'll go into the first budget revision. And then here's that preschool building. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. That kind of is the good, the bad and the ugly.
I have a, it's not really specific to us or anything question, just that you might know. Why do we have to go out for bid for the lowest responsive bidder on so many things, but not insurance? Like, why does RESIC get this monopoly on insurance?
Well, I don't think RESIC has a monopoly. I think that, I mean, they're, they're a school pool. So RESIC, the Redwood Empire Insurance and Redwood Empire Schools Insurance Group is a school pool. And so they actually go out onto the commercial market to get quotes on things like excess insurance, whether it's for workers' comp or property and liability. So they're actually evaluating all of these things. The challenge with property and liability is that it's, it's a large part because of the fires in Sonoma County and, and other places in the state. And so everywhere, property and liability is going up. I will tell you, there are potential options that we can explore, and I have, you know, Gary and I have talked about that over the last couple of years, about do we consider going to somewhere like NorCal Relief, which is a, a big, large school pool. It would increase our co-pay to about 25,000 per event instead of 3,500. But that also may bring our costs down, and so that may be something we want to look into. I mean, these costs honestly are getting to be so ridiculous at $1.2 million, that maybe time to start doing that. We just need to make sure what the unintended consequences are.
Right. I mean, everything about insurance is essentially gambling, so there's no easy answer.
Well, you're, you're right. You want to understand the risks that you're taking on, you know what I mean? Because insurance is about managing risk. Which is similar to gambling.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, Chris, this year again, it sounds like that there might be some substantial differences between the May revised and the actual past budget. Sounds like the legislature is estimating higher revenues than the governor did. And so how will that be? Does that happen at the, are we going to have another, what was it, a, a pre-first? What, what did we have last summer, where we had two budget adoptions or something?
A 45-day budget revision?
Right.
Yeah, we could. I mean, revenues are up, I mean, there's a lot of unknowns in the state in the May revise that are not built in here. So for example, he proposed implementing full transitional kindergarten. So in other words, two years of kindergarten for all fourth graders, right? I mean, four-year-olds, excuse me. Of course, implemented over a three-year period, and part of that was also capital facilities funding to support facilities needs, because that's going to create some crunches. Think about Grant. Think about McKinley, think about Pen Grove. They don't have any room to add additional transitional kindergarten students. And so there are a lot of schools are in that boat. So I think it'll really come down to where do, where does the state legislature and the governor prioritize those additional funds? Are they going to put it into childcare? Are they going to put it in the transitional kender? It's just kind of a wait and see. I haven't seen much, Gary, I don't know what you've seen coming out from some of the committees. I haven't seen a lot of updates about things changing dramatically.
Yeah.
So I don't know if there's going to be a dramatic difference.
I haven't seen anything in committee. I think that the the one thing I want to point out to the board is, is this is really try to take something very complex and simplify it. I'll, let me attempt to do that. The numbers from past history with Chris on anticipated expenses have been pretty spot on. The million-dollar question literally, or the 1.7 million dollar question roughly that the board is going to have to ask, and, and quite frankly, the bargaining units are going to have to ask this question. The COLA is not the critical thing in all of this. The, the, the real question is going to be when you get into after October, when you get into November, December, is did the students come or not? Because that's, that's the bottom line. Because if, if Chris's numbers are correct with the enrollment, and we think they are pretty close, then there's not enough money in the COLA to make up for the loss of those students. That's the bottom line. So your question should be, as a board, as a board in November is, what is our enrollment in relationship to this budget? Because that'll tell you everything, which is, the good news is, if those kids come back, then we're doing really well. We're going to be doing really well, and then you'll have more opportunities to do things. You'll have more revenues. But if those kids don't, you're, you're, you're in a deficit model. So you're going to have to look at, at, it's not, you know, because that'll mean, that, that'll be, that'll be important for you as a board, because that means it's not a one-year blip. That means the kids, the kids weren't here for at least two years. Students that aren't here for two years don't typically come back again. They're gone. So we'll know, you know, you're, the numbers that come out, that when we start doing our counts in the fall will be everything to this budget. And if the, if the numbers don't come in, it doesn't matter, that 5% COLA, the 5% COLA is important because it'll keep us afloat. But that's, you know, that's, that's, that's going to be short-lived.
And, and to Gary's point, I mean, when you look back and pull the enrollment projections up, since 05, 06 through 2019, 20, we were our lowest year was 74, 34 at Seabed 17, 18. Other than that, we've been hovering around 7,500 over the past several years, and certainly more than that prior to that. And some of this back here related to that apartment to condo reconfiguration near McDowell, where we lost 300 kids back in that time. But if we actually, if our new norm comes down to 7,372, 70, right now, we're hovering at 72, 87, that's at month seven. And, or month nine, and that's 100 kids lower, 90 kids lower than we were at October of 20. So October of 2020, early May, we lost 90 kids. And I'm projecting we're going to pop up, back up by that 100, by roughly 100, based on what we're seeing. And we're currently continuing to work on getting this number larger. But Gary's absolutely right, because this becomes the foundation for the out years. So so anyway, so that, that is really important. So I would say that's the good, the bad and the ugly. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's really, as I said at the May revise, this is a good budget. It's a solid budget. We have strong reserves, which is going to help us with 22, 23, 23, 24 as we plan, and as we look at enrollment and what it really comes in it, and as we project out. But I think 21, 22, we're really going to have to spend some time, and how do we market our schools, and how do we get that enrollment back up? So that the out years continue to be strong. The good news is, we have strong enough reserves that we have time to plan and prepare.
Right. Good, good budget, real good budget. But, but the state of California does not concern itself with districts that are declining enrollment. That issue, the declining enrollment, is one we own. And so there's no budget that's going to be able to And so there's no budget that's going to be able to make up for the, for losing kids at 12, $13,000 a pop.
Isn't a lot of California in declining enrollment?
Yes.
I would say the entire nation, the entire nation is struggling with what happened to all these kids. It's not, it's not even a unique California issue.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? For Chris? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
And then you get to see it two more times. So.
And do you have these available as a binder?
We do.
Okay. I'd like to come pick one up tomorrow.
I'll let Lori know.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to comments from the public on non-agendized items. So I am going to read our policy on. Comments from the public. And then we'll open the chat. You're going to put your first and last name in the chat and the topic that you would like to speak towards. So under government code section 54954.3. Members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest. Providing that relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees. The district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee. The board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda. It will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda. We listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four minute per person limit or a 20 minute limit per subject matter. So we're going to open up the chat. If you have a comment on. A non-agendized item, you can put that in there and I will let Superintendent Callahan decide when to close the chat.
Okay, I think we can close the chat.
Okay, we have Sarah. And you have four minutes.
Good evening, everyone. And yay, you all are my heroes for ending this year. Has been like the craziest 16 month year of all time. So I want to give you all. Massive props for all the work that you've done. And thank you to Sheldon, Jen, and Caitlin Quinn for attending Mary Collins School Cherry Valley. Promotion where my eldest Tabitha was graduating from the eighth grade. It was really nice to see you all. Tonight, there's just two things really quickly I wanted to touch on. One was I wanted to revisit and hear more about the plans for. Title six training and professional development. Particularly, I was reviewing or thinking about this and wondering if it was possible to have it be. A panel type discussion wherein we have. The legal. Side from, you know, representatives from the law firms that represent the districts and, and. And, you know, the district and then also have. Office of Civil Rights or, you know, Savior Six come so that there can be for all admin staff. You know, everyone to be involved and see a, all different sides of the issues and all the different manners in which it can affect our families and our teachers. And our administration and so on and so forth. This might bring a well-rounded view to what is. Title six and allow our families to feel supported and our teachers as well, and so on and so forth. I also had a question in regards to an incident that happened a few weeks back where there was a teacher who. Said the N word while they were reading. And I know that there's been some follow up with the school over at Casa Grande. And I was just curious to see how that was going to carry forward in the year, in the year that's coming, now that the school year has finished. And I wanted to make sure that that was still upfront. In people's minds so that it did not get forgotten with last, you know, with the year ending. And I wanted to end by saying, thank you, Gary, for all of your work. Thank you, Cliff, for all of your work, for everybody who has been here. You all are awesome. Thank you very much for listening and allowing me to. Share my voice as much as possible and entertaining it. You all amaze and inspire. Thank you for working with us.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, that was the only public comment on. Non-agendized item. So next up is report on activities and correspondence of the school board. Lots of promotions. Kennelworth, PAX, Mary Collins at Cherry Valley. Petaluma Junior High School, Petaluma High, CASA. The Alternative Ed Graduation, which included San Antonio, Snowman Mountain, Carpe Diem, and Valley Oaks. We also attended North Bay LGBTQI plus families picnic. Casa Grande Senior Interviews and Project Showcase and LCAT Meeting. We squeezed a lot into these past two weeks, especially this weekend. All right. So next up, we have comments from the public on consent items. Same policy as before, so I won't reread it. And we'll open up the chat again. I'll let Superintendent Callahan decide when to close it. Please put your first and last name and. The item that you would like to speak towards. And it needs to be something that is on this consent, consent agenda.
Given the fact that it's a pretty lean consent agenda, we'll close this.
Okay, thank you. So next up. We have the approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
Second.
All right. Any questions anyone has or comments? Not even Maddie?
Not even me.
Not even Maddie? All right. All right. So all in favor? I opposed? All right, great. Moving on. Comments from the public on action items. Again, same policy as before. First and last name in the chat. Superintendent Callahan will decide when to close the chat. And this is comments on specifically on our action items.
We will close the chat.
Okay. First item, 12.1.1 Resolution 21, sorry, 2021 to 30. Board of Education, the Petaluma City and Joint, sorry, Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts expressing gratitude to the PCS community during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Can we read that out loud?
Sheldon, would you like to do the honors? Sheldon Jen was the main, actually, he was the author. He asked me to edit it and I was like, no way. This is great. So if, if you'd like to.
Sure. Into the record and, and for the record, this was a. You know, the board wanted to express our gratitude for the extraordinary work that's been done this past year under really difficult, arduous. Circumstances. And as the board members were attending all these promotions, we heard a lot of voices. From parents and students and teachers and staff about how challenging this work was. And yet we, we made it through. So we just wanted to express our thanks to the community. So Resolution 2021 dash 30 of Board of Education. Expressing gratitude to the PCS community during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the World Health Organization declared COVID-19 a pandemic on March 11th, 2020. And public health officials subsequently issued numerous directives to combat the pandemic. Including sheltering in place, masking, social distancing, and COVID-19 testing. And whereas these public health orders fundamentally altered and constrained teaching and learning in Petaluma City Schools. Highlighted by these adaptations, all instruction pivoted to distance learning modality in March 2020 to the end of the 2019, 2020 academic year. PCS committed to starting the 2020, 2021 academic year in distance learning modality only. And so summer 2020 was spent improving online synchronous and asynchronous pedagogy. In late fall 2020, in-person learning pods were initiated at schools for those students and families needing the most support for distance learning. In winter in 2021, extracurricular programming began to resume under very strict public health guidelines. In April 2021, PCS reopened schools for in-person learning in a hybrid schedule. For students and families choosing that option while continuing the full distance learning option for other students and families. And in May 2021, in-person learning under the secondary schools hybrid schedule increased from two days to four, two days per week to four. And whereas all these substantial changes impacted the health and mental health of all members of the PCS community. While requiring their sacrifices, hard, hard work, collaboration, and goodwill in ways including the following. Students missed many hallmark events of youth, including open houses, performances, sporting events, social events, and ceremonies. Were separated from their teachers and friends for over a year and still adapted to this to distance learning and demonstrated their resiliency and perseverance. Families took on expanded roles in the education of their children. Creating learning spaces in their homes, tutoring their children and mentoring their, or monitoring their engagement and progress. All while adapting to their own work situations during the pandemic and keeping their families safe and healthy. Teachers and site staff trained to distance learning pedagogies adapted their courses to the modality, then readapted them to hybrid modalities. Planned and implemented creative activities and events to support students' social emotional development during the pandemic. Prepared for the safe return of students to campus, all while supporting their own children's education and their family's health. Administrators and district staff navigated the ever-changing academic and public health guidelines, the budgetary and budgetary forecasts. Arranged for internet connectivity for all students and staff, monitored overall student progress and revised practices. To meet the needs of all students in all circumstances. And planned processes and prepared facilities for students' safe return to school and activities. And whereas the advent of COVID-19 vaccine signaled the less restrictive future. And allowed PCS to plan for fully in-person teaching and learning for the 2021 and 2022 academic year. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees expresses its deepest thanks. To PCS students, families, teachers, staff, and administrators for their collaboration. And their truly heroic efforts to maintain continuity, care, and excellence in our students' learning experiences throughout this crisis.
Thank you, Sheldon.
What a year.
Yeah.
Gosh. Thank you all so much. Parents, teachers, staff, administrators. Wow. Yeah. Well, let's not do that again.
Yeah, please.
I move to approve Resolution 2021. Dash 30.
I happily second.
All in favor? I opposed? All right. Next up, I think this is Mr. Harris. Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators in the Petaluma City School District.
Would you like me to describe it?
Yes, please.
Sure. The Declaration for Needs are the reason we have two, two declarations, ones for the elementary school district, ones for the Joint Union High School District. Declaration of Need is for fully qualified educators. It's an annual form that we submit to the Commission on Teacher Credentialing. When we want it, if, if we're anticipating the need to employ interns or teachers on emergency permits or limited assignment permits. Obviously, our goal, our, our number, our priority would be to hire fully credentialed. Teachers. However, we do also want to acknowledge that we're, you know, we have shortage, teacher shortage right now, particularly in the areas. That we outlined in the Declaration for Need. Bilingual educators, special education is a huge, huge area of need, a shortage. Math, science, I think it's in bilingual as well. This declaration need has to be on file with the Commission on Teacher Credentialing. Before we offer any internships, emergency permits, limited assignment permits for the employment agency.
Matthew, I have a quick question. I noticed you named three different. Schools, Sonoma State Dominican and one other. And I was wondering why the, the SCO intern program wasn't included in that. The North Bay, I'm not sure of the name.
Yeah, I, I, it's a great question. We, we do actually use North Bay. I didn't realize that was, that one wasn't in there. We do hire teachers from the North, the North Coast program.
Does it matter if it's in there or not?
Do we need to amend it?
Yeah.
Where are you, are you on the secondary or where, which one are you on?
Um, I don't have it in front of me right now. I think it was on both.
Let me just look here. Yes, this is each college, university. Yeah, I, I think we could amend it to include that and include North Coast.
Okay. Do we need, shoot, I move to amend the. Need for internship resolution to include the North Coast. I don't know the full name.
School of Education, yeah.
North Coast School of Education.
I second. Both, you're both. 12.1.2 and 12.1.3.
Yes.
Good. A second. All in favor of that amendment?
I.
Okay. Did anyone have any other questions on either of these before we take action? Or a comment? Okay, thank you, Matthew. So voted on 12.1.2. All in favor? I opposed? All right. Item 12.1.3.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to, I move to approve.
Second.
Point three. As amended.
As amended, yes.
Thank you. I hope Michelle's getting all this. I'm sure she is. She's the best.
She records it on her little pen. She has a special pen.
All in favor? I opposed? Okay, moving on. Business Services. Right? Is that back to you, Chris?
Yep. So budget revision number four. We're presenting it here tonight for approval. Unless there's any further questions from my prior presentation. Or I'm happy to go back over all those presentations.
We got it.
To approve budget revision number four.
A second.
All in favor? I opposed? Okay, looks like it's the same for 12.2.2. Is that right?
So, so what we're asking you to do is take action to approve the preliminary budget. And basically doing that, you're providing us with direction to prepare. And basically doing that, you're providing us with direction to prepare all of the state reports and come back for bringing the adopted budget for a public hearing on the seventeenth and then for final adoption on the twenty second, I believe.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Oh, I think Sheldon had a question.
Oh, sorry, Sheldon.
I'm just trying to figure out this timeline. What happens when if the legislature and the governor sign a budget that is, you know, significantly different than this and what this is based on?
So that's a great question. I mean, I will tell you, um, if they sign something tomorrow and it significantly changed our revenues, I would probably try to incorporate it in if I have time to do that. Generally, that doesn't, I don't have the enough time to do that. So my anticipation would be, this will be the budget we'll bring back on the seventeenth for the public hearing. Then the board takes action on the twenty second, state budget gets adopted. Then we immediately analyze the state budget and see what what impact it has on this budget that you would then adopt, have already adopted. And then by August, we would be bringing you a forty-five day budget revision, basically disclosing any material changes between the adopted budget and the final state budget. If they're immaterial, then it would come back during our normal process.
But I guess at a minimum, we're, I guess, we're expecting the S R three revision or that, the S R three to to trigger a revision.
I, you know, it could, and I'm happy to bring back revision, the S R, the forty-five days to disclose any changes with the state adopted budget versus ours.
Okay.
So the S R money, we've already disclosed what the potential amount of that money is. So that would not trigger a forty-five day.
All right, thank you.
But but the board could certainly say, hey, we'd like to see what the impact is, and we could bring it back a budget revision in October and kind of show you that. And that might not be a bad idea, just given the whole ELO and the and the planning that's going along with it. So we can certainly have that conversation over the summer, um, but it would not trigger the forty-five day.
Would we also know at that point about our um, our enrollment at least better?
Yeah, I mean, we can, um, we can bring certainly enrollment update, like the second board meeting in September. So we closed the books, the first board meeting, we can bring back enrollment update. You don't want it too early because enrollment tends to fluctuate pretty dramatically in the first ten, ten days to two weeks.
When are SEbeds?
Oh, I'm sorry, the California Basic Education Data System, SEbeds, is that's that first Tuesday in October that every
Okay.
The state of California reports enrollment. So we could either bring back enrollment update after we know what that enrollment is as of SEbeds Day, which is that first Tuesday. Or we could bring one back in September and say, hey, this is how the first two, three weeks of enrollment look. This is, you know what I mean? Given the sensitivity of our enrollment, that might not be a bad idea.
Thank you.
But it won't impact the budget because we're still using nineteen twenty ADA. So it won't change the budget. It would only change multi-projections that first enrollment.
Okay, any other questions?
I think I'm getting it, Chris.
I can see the light.
It almost said like, oh.
You've gotten that for a long time. Kind of scare you too, the fact that it probably makes you a little nervous, like, oh, my gosh, I'm getting it.
It's like, God, I hope I'm right.
I move to approve the whatever it is. I'm sorry.
Preliminary budget.
Preliminary budget for twenty twenty one, twenty two.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
I.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, moving on, comments from the public on discussion slash information items. Same deal as before. Open up the chat.
I think we can close the chat.
Okay. Uh, moving on to discussion slash information items. First up is Ed Services. Mary Collins, Cherry Valley, new course proposal for project-based learning. Was this you, Cliff?
Yeah, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So the the Mary Collins Middle Grades Program. They've been updating their courses to be in alignment with the credentialing requirements. So we brought you some courses back during the normal timeline in January, and there was two more they were working on. This is one of those two. It's a social studies elective with project-based learning activities. So if you if you read through it, there's five strands students can do, and they're all technology-based um projects. So it's a pretty cool course there they want to offer next year.
Okay, does anyone have any questions about that? All right, uh, next up, I think this is still you, Mr. DeGraw.
Yeah, so I'm I'm happy to share out that after several years of of looking at next generation science standards and looking at curriculum and piloting a few of them. We've reached a point where the the teachers really um want to move forward with the Hoden Mifflin materials we've been piloting. We started piloting literally Monday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty. So if you can remember what happened on that day. So it turned into this digital-only pilot through the end of the year, and then we uh, we kind of gave it a, you know, a good, honest try this year, obviously, in in business learning for the most part, but um, so we looked at a number of different options. But we settled on both high schools, all all, well, all the high schools, so all Ted and comprehensive are all going to use the Hoden Mifflin Biology for their biology courses. And then Earth Science, although we call it physical science technically, the course, um, we're going to be using the Earth Science textbook with physical science um online access for the teachers, and they can still assign things from the book. Um, we're going to be purchasing hard copy books, class sets for every teacher. So every student has access to a physical copy in class as well as the online access. It all comes comes together. And you can imagine following the pandemic and distance learning, there was an emphasis to get kids using a hand-on, you know, hands-on textbook a little more next year and not have to rely always on the screen. So in school, they'll be using their books. At home, they'll still have access digitally, but um, in the past, in our pilots, we typically only purchased a set of fifteen per teacher per subject as backups because everyone has digital access on their device. But this, you know, following the pandemic, this was you know, one of the things that the teachers felt like was important is getting kids off the screen as much as possible in science. So that's, that's where we're at. So we're going to be implementing these next year um at all of our high schools, all Ted and comprehensive.
So it's district-wide, so every science class will be using the same?
Yeah, every, every biology class and every um physical science or science class will be using all the same texts.
Good. Thank you.
We have, we have money set aside in the Prop twenty lottery for the secondary to make these purchases.
I'm glad we're getting handheld books.
Right.
I'm really glad.
Especially if there's a power outage or, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, anyone have any questions on this or comments? Okay, moving on to future.
Oh, I only want to thank Cliff for um for helping me get get on so that I could see it. So thank you.
Yeah, you know, speak, speaking of that, just real quick, coincidentally, um, we happen to have selected Hoden Mifflin for ELA, ELD, um, and also for some other things. So our our kids, as they go through our system, our students are actually pretty dang familiar with the Hoden Mifflin, you know, online platform and all those things. So all all of these groups were independent of each other, these pilot groups. Um, we obviously haven't adopted Hoden Mifflin for everything. We have, you know, we have plenty of other publishers, but so that's one of those things, Maddie, although it was, you know, new to you, trying to get in, right, the kids, our tech, our tech department, they're all familiar with their, their system.
Yes, they don't quite have my my age either. But thank you. Yeah, that makes sense.
All right, uh, moving on to future business. There's a lot down there.
Oh, there's one more.
Oh, is there?
Forty point one point three.
One more.
Oh, so sorry. How did I miss that one? Okay, um, four point fourteen point one point three, next steps on dual immersion.
So I think I'll start it out on this one. I think that um we're going to look for some direction. We, that doesn't necessarily have to happen tonight. But we need some direction about where where the board wants to go with dual immersion. And we'll probably need to do that as some type of an action item. I'm not sure. This is our opportunity to just have a free discussion about it. You know, it would take some time to get it up and up and running, and we would time is of the essence, I think. And this was a part of the future business that um we start, we've we've picked off, we probably haven't noticed from because the future business list is growing, but there are actually two or three items that have been taken off that we've we've built into these uh, this meeting.
Is this, I know, go ahead, Caitlin.
I think the first step should be um surveying TK parents and parents of other kids that will be going into kindergarten because kindergarten is where we would start. So it's probably not the easiest population to survey since they're not captured in a specific class, but um get gauging that interest level and where those parents are located for helping decide on a campus, even though I think we have strong contenders for campuses.
How do other people feel about that?
That's a good idea. I, are we, I'm um wondering, are we looking to do this for the twenty, the twenty-two slash twenty-three school year? Yeah.
That's my understanding, I think.
I would, yeah, I mean, based upon what we heard at the um, what we call is study sessions. Uh, you know, what I heard from uh folks who have started these things is, you know, twelve to eighteen months ahead is is our planning period. I think uh, and and my understanding is part of that planning is going to have to be chartering a school or or creating a charter in order to deliver a dual, is that true or not? I'm not, uh, I I, my understanding as a parent was that um it had to happen in our charter. Is that not true?
You, you could do it. You would do it as a dependent charter for the, for for a number of.
Right, right, that's right, yeah. Um, and so, you know, I I would love to see us, you know, put together a proposal of what, you know, what we could start in the fall of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, that includes, you know, uh, kind of, uh, the citing, as Caitlin was saying, uh, you know, which school makes sense. Um, you know, estimated demands uh for this kind of stuff could be through the survey, as Caitlin was just saying. Uh, marking this thing and this, and justifying it too. I mean, I think this proposal could hit on so many of the issues that this board has been grappling with recently, the declining enrollments that Chris has been talking about. I think it could be really attractive to area places or area, uh, brighter area um families is what I meant to come into Pedaluma. Uh, it could hit on the um diversity issues. I think it was, uh, I think it was Joanna that brought up that, you know, the 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 gaps, opportunity gaps we see at the high school levels, you know, they start in kindergarten. And I think this is one way that we can be addressing that. So I think, you know, a strong justification in that proposal uh could help us um sell it to the community and and get it started and then grow the plant. Uh, you know, we we have a lot to learn from, from what uh Loma Vista did. Um, I can also point us to Fresno City Schools, which I believe they have like eighteen dual immersion schools now. Uh, you know, they they know how to do it. Um, so, yeah. I I would like to see us move towards a full proposal uh that, you know, lays out how this is going to work out, starting in fall twenty twenty-two.
A quick question. Does it have to be a, and uh, a charter? Can't it be one of our existing schools?
It would, it would need to be a charter because you would be um
distracting.
I'm not sure I want to necessarily comment too much on that in, you know, but
Okay.
you would need to be a charter, otherwise you would be restricting your ability to um to bring in students from the outside.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Gary.
But what what would have to happen, it's doable. Of course, I can always say that um, I'm sitting in my seat. But what, what, what has to happen, though, to to make that happen is it's a four-pronged effort. It has to be taking place simultaneously with Matthew overseeing the four areas. So area one is 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 primarily just, um, it's really uh communications and innovations. They would need to do the surveying piece. That would be their responsibility.
Who's they?
Uh, well, it it's led by David and Ashley.
Okay.
They would need to do that. The second part, working with with legal counsel, has to be on the actual dependent charter piece, should be Liz doing the charter piece related to that. The educational component of that, the the third or the fourth prong would have to be the specifics about what that program looked like um and how that rollout would be, that would be Ed Services. And then Chris would handle the facility piece as it related to that, as far as location and what would need to take place. It's not that difficult to 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 roll out the facility piece if you have space already available at certain schools. And obviously, it's a gradual introduction to a program like this. You're not, you know, you're phasing it in, you're not starting up in one fell swoop. So but all those four things would have to take place simultaneously, and all of that would have to be really dialed in and completed by November, no later than December meeting.
Yeah.
Because you would have to be communicating where that you're you're open for business on a small scale for going into into January and that, you know, that whether that's TK only, whether that's TKK, whether that's TKK one. There couldn't be more than that. Probably, probably, probably TKK is a smart way to go and leave it and leave it at that.
So would this be at an art? Would it be like, kind of like PAX, which is at McKinley School? Would it be a charter at
Yes.
within another school? Okay.
It would most definitely have to be that. So it would be identifying.
Who would, the district would write up the charter application? Okay.
And they would work with bond, they would work with legal counsel on on that particular piece of it. If this would be a Herculean effort, though, I will tell you, this would give, this would give Ed Services their primary responsibility. This in the ELO plan, yep, that's, that's a, that's a massive, massive push. It's doable. It's doable because in the sense that when you think of the immersion piece, you got to think of it as four people, do four groups of people in cabinet doing four very different things that are intersecting. But they each have different responsibilities in it. That's the only way it can do it, and that's um in this to meet this timeline. If that makes sense, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, that does. Thank you.
Thank you. That was really nice. I just have a couple of comments when you were mentioning about the communications piece. Um, and, you know, if we do a survey, however that's done, it seems like the outreach has to be much more um uh comprehensive and yet targeted, you know, I mean, it's like, it seems like our surveys don't really get us the information we need, at least recently. And so um, this is like, this is something we really need the community to uh, and and particularly our educational community to weigh in on uh to make it, I mean, I agree that the TK um, in kindergarten, parents are essential to survey, but I think we need a much bigger. And kindergarten parents are essential to survey, but I think we need a much bigger net on that.
Yeah, it would be.
It would be very, very, you know, much more than just like a. You know, a survey monkey. No one, no one answers those. And so I'd like to see something much more substantive than that.
Yeah, it would be.
I agree.
Out of your, your, your spot on. It would be an A, what we would call an atypical survey because we're, 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 we're going out to reach people, many people that aren't even in the district. Right now.
Right.
So, for example. Part of it, Family Resource Center would play a part in some of that because they would be doing some outreach. We would be hitting social media much. Your, your data is going to be wider. You're going to get more data from more people, but it's also not going to necessarily represent. Whether students are even part of Petaluma City Schools. For example, you'll get families that'll go, guy, yeah, great idea. I'm, I, I'm in another district. My kids don't even go to school in Petaluma. But you just kind of know that going out, when you do that kind of a wide outreach, you're trying to get, I, I assume what the board's trying to do is get a sense of the. The, the, the momentum or really community interest. In this type of a program.
I'm not, I'm not convinced we're going to learn much from that, simply because. We have Loma Vista just to look at, to see what the community's interest is already. I mean, they're the largest elementary school now. And in the, in the city and, and they have a waitlist and, you know.
Well.
What?
Well, but it's, if they're two different districts and I want to see whether there's enough to add something that's as successful as Loma Vista here.
I can tell you that the kids going to Loma Vista aren't necessarily in Adobe. I, I'm not in Adobe and I sent my two kids there.
No, no, but what I mean is. Is that, is there enough interest within the community and within the, the larger community? To have two really big programs that are successful. I just feel like I need to. To find that out for ourselves.
I, I just don't want us to. I would be cautious to put too much weight on what we get from a survey.
Oh, I, yeah, I just want it to be. I wanted to be more sensitive and more. A, a more outreach to it than what, than a survey monkey, basically.
Yep.
You know, I just.
I hear, I hear what you're saying. You're like, I just want, like, I know it's there, like Sheldon's saying, like, we just know anecdotally and just numbers. It's there, but you want to see like more quantitatively, like.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, but I, I think that's why I like Gary's approach of like, let's. Do these things at the same time. So like Sheldon's saying, we're not like spending too much time on.
Yeah.
Just as one piece to like, just justify in our minds that we already know, like, let's move with these other pieces as well. Is that fair?
Yes, and definitely I didn't, it would not discourage me whether or not whatever the survey. Resulted in it, that was your concern, Sheldon.
Yeah, I mean, I.
No, that, that would have, it's just to, just to gauge the interest and see what's out, you know, because we might find that there's. There's a lot more interest or, or whatever. It wouldn't discourage me. It's just to find out what's going on.
I think enrollment speak, speak powerfully compared to the surveys and enrollments are, 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 are pretty evident.
Two items are related to that, though. You know, I was thinking that. I guess when I was looking at part of this is I really see that initial, I guess you call it a survey, but I was really seeing that as your first step of advertising.
That's what I was about to.
Work that you're doing this and we want to know how you feel about it. But I do think there is some important data that can be gathered from current families. Because what you're also trying to gauge is, is what would potentially be the impact to current schools. So for example, interviewing folks that are still fresh. At Kinder or first or second grade and saying, hey, here's a program, if this had been there.
Right.
Would you have, would you have considered it is, is good to know because not all folks that. There were a lot of people that were on the fence that wanted, ultimately chose to stay because they wanted to stay in the district. So it'd be interesting to just know that, what that is. So it'd be some focus, real quick focus group types of things, but it would also be. Talking with, I would assume we would, what we, we would be looking at doing some outreach of some folks that, that also chose to do. To do, to, to move to that. So. For what it's worth, but I do think it would be. It, you know, it would be that first. It, you would want to be letting few folks know if that along the way and there would need to be a plan for September. October, November, December, that you're rolling out information that this is coming. You know, you know how to bring people along on this one and they need to be really, really in the know and all of that. But I will tell you that just from, from. From experience with these types of programs, what's everything in all of this, I cannot say it enough. Is if, if you finally move forward and you decide, yes, we are doing this, you have to hire your folks right then and there. They have to be there, those teachers, to meet those parents. For the first program. They have to be there. And that's all you need. If you have really good, if you have a really good leadership and you have a really good teachers. People will, will, will move forward if they really believe in the people that you have that are doing it.
Sounds like a five, a five-pronged approach then, put HR in there as well.
Yep. Well, at that point. They're going to, you're going to have to do the hire.
Is teaching at a dual immersion school, does that require a special credential?
Yeah, it does.
It does?
Yeah, I mean, you need to have, you need to have a B-clad typically.
Okay, but you don't need, there's not a. Credential to teach. Okay, it's just having the B-clad.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Good question, Ellen. I didn't even think. Anyone else have any questions, comments, concerns? Any of our cabinet folk have anything to add about this? Since Gary has just volunteered you on his way out. Okay.
Happy to tell him what to do. From a chair or somewhere. I'm happy, happy to do that.
All right.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is, let's do it, let's do a survey, let's do a community survey. And start moving down the path of, of getting some, a, a process, looking into. Whether or not, yeah, yes, we need to get to, to do a dependent charter for this. And. Start working on next steps, finding facilities, sites. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
By November.
And. I, I, I totally. I'm, you know. Whatever, how many months it is, eighteen months seems like a long time, but I totally agree with Gary. When you say go, parents are going to want to meet those kindergarten teachers. We have to have them in place and they, yeah, that, that pushes up the, the planning considerably. So, you know. We'll, we'll lean on your recommendations on, you know, if, if fall twenty twenty-two is, is feasible.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything else? All right, moving on, future business. You're right, Gary, you've included everything. The list is growing. Does anyone have anything to add?
Can I request that the revised climate resolution come on the agenda for our next meeting?
Okay.
Because I, I think I've, I've drafted it. I just wanted to make sure that. What's in it is, is acceptable. I mean, is, you know, reasonable for a district office. It mainly, you know, has a little bit more. Directive on Ed Services and Business and Operations, quite frankly. Regarding, well, regarding environmental literacy on the Ed Services side, but then also. Regarding climate, carbon footprint on the operations side.
Yeah, and professional development.
Yes, that too, yes, the HR also.
I was hoping to get an update on the census and districts. Like our district and possibly splitting into. District elections.
So I can give you a little bit of an update on that right now. So Matthew and I have a meeting set up for. To meet with legal. Next week to, on initiation of that process. It's a little more complicated because we're a city charter. We have to go in front of the city. For that. And so we, you should be able to get an update on that one in July. As far as a, a, a kind of a timeline to do that.
And isn't the city considering doing that as well? City Council?
I don't know. I don't know.
I'm sure they've talked about it because there's someone going around suing every.
Right, right.
Notice, just notice how Gary's doing this and his last, last couple of weeks here and. As he, as he exits and, and I, I begin. Matthew is just now more self-aware of what the position entails, that's all. Kind of like when you buy a new car and you notice that everybody has the same car as you. I love you, Matthew.
Anything else? Is it possible, Jason and Cliff, I think this is you guys mainly, to get just like. I don't know, an overview of Parents Square? Is that what we are looking for? From this future business? Now that we've completed a year with it? Or was.
I, I think that's more a, probably an Ashley.
Oh, there's Dave.
Thing.
Okay. What, what do you think about next meeting? Just giving us like a rundown of how it went, maybe like engagement. All of that, if you recommend that we bring it back. What that would look like. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
I think parents really like it.
I love it. I mean.
From what I've heard.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been great.
I just have a quick question about the math support. Is, is that like part of the ELO and the? LCAP?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I, I think this was originally brought up because it was one of the focuses of. The LCAP as we developed it. Last year and then got put on hiatus and then when the new LCAP came. We kind of spent more of our focus on pandemic learning loss. So the math, it's still there, but it's, it's definitely included in the ELO. So I, but I don't, I don't know if, if, you know, further discussion. You know, needing, you know, needs to be had or the board wants to talk more about math support in addition to what's in the yellow.
Was that in kind of relationship to the request? That there be like, like a reading specialist, that they have math specialists at the elementary school level?
Probably.
Came from?
It sounds like, I know that was.
And our math support isn't necessarily that though, right? In the LCAP, in the ELO?
No, I mean, I think, I think that piece is, has to do with the fact that, that we've had reading support through the form of reading specialist for a while. But we don't have that kind of support for math and interventions for math have been. I mean, it, it, it's not strong. So looking to build that piece up.
So we could maybe use that as a, as a presentation to the board about how that could, could happen. That'd be great.
Yeah, in the ELO, we do have math, elementary math specialist as one of the ideas. And in our just rough planning and estimates. We hadn't really thought out how many FTEs potentially. Like we do for a reading specialist. We did list what the cost of one would be. It's probably more of a need than just one person. We do have math, you know, support at the secondary through additional sections. That we do fund through the LCAP. You know, so they can do, you know, things like Math One Workshop and. Support students who are struggling and have smaller class sizes. So I think this was more of an elementary thing, but I think the discussion overall. Of math support is, is warranted.
Maddie, we're meeting on Friday with all of the, the leadership team to go over this very, these very issues.
Thank you.
Anyone else, anything else? Okay, so we are going to adjourn back into closed session.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Will you guys be coming back out to report anything?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to have to.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we are reconvening the Board of Education meeting. We are going to report out on, on action, action on items heard in closed session. There were, there was no action taken on items heard in closed session. And with that, we are going to finally adjourn this meeting. Bye.